Beth and Forrest knew we had a workshop?
Uh, yeah, Beth told me she was gonna be late.
I think Forrest walked in already.
We need to get started if we're gonna cover it.
Yeah. Ms. Clerk, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna get it rocking. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session Agenda, May 6, 2025. The time is now 4:03. Starting with item number two, work session topics. Discussion of AR1, AR2, and the new proposed AR3 zoning districts.
Sure, if I can start off. This is the result of a lot of hard work related to the zoning steering committee and the revamp of the zoning classifications, which is the final items in our code, in our code update. So if you recall, as a result of, I believe it was the fall retreat, we, you all approved the start of a steering committee made up of different members of the public and professions, as well as local government folks, IDA. And the group's been meeting religiously. And I will say we've gotten some really great turnout and participation by, by cross-section of the folks there. We've got probably two of our hardest workers here, which is Brittany Dasher and Brian Thompson. And so what we've managed to go through and what we're gonna bring up with you today is that we were, we wanted to get past some of the less complicated zoning classifications, which are the business, industrial, and agricultural, as well as the table of permitted uses. And that would really leave just the residential that the committee has left. And so we've, Chelsea will take you through the, the recommended changes in those three districts and then and show you how we're kinda doing it differently from what's on there right, what's on there right now. I may step in just to provide some clarification from the history that I have with it. But with that, I'll let Chelsea begin.
Thank you, Tim. So the slide that I have up here right now explains kinda the overall changes that you'll see as you're looking at the AR1, AR2, and then our proposed AR3 that you'll, you'll see tonight as well. So all of the ordinances, they have a new intent that's been added. And they are based on our comprehensive plan, the language that's in our comprehensive plan. Some of them had this intent statement that was in the beginning of our ordinances. We've either, you know, revamped it based on what the steering committee has suggested, or we've added one. We are also referencing the table of permitted uses, so you'll see that as well. And then one of the big things that the steering committee has suggested is again being consistent. So as you'll see, the tables that we're gonna go over, all the tables are consistent. The steering committee definitely wanted that to be highlighted, so. So let's start with AR1. So the current, and this is just the table that is within the, the actual ordinance right now. So the current AR1 standards, the minimum lot area is five acres. And as you can see, it gives you a list of what those standards are in AR1. Under that, you can see the proposed AR1 standards. This is what has come out of committee. And so what the committee has proposed is that the minimum lot area for AR1 would remain that five acres. A maximum of two residential units are permitted per lot. These may consist of two principal dwellings or one principal dwelling and then one accessory dwelling unit. And we will, a little bit later, we'll speak on that accessory dwelling unit, a definition for what that actually is and what that may look like. Keeping the minimum lot, or actually changing the minimum lot road frontage to 100 feet. The minimum lot width at building line to 150 feet. The front yard setback, actually, all the setbacks have remained the same for AR1. And then the big change here would be that the maximum building height would be 40 feet, as opposed to that 35 feet. So that's your proposed standards for AR1. Moving to AR2, again, that top box there is what is current AR2 standards. And then your proposed standards, again, from the committee, would be a minimum lot area of one acre. As you can see, that's consistent with what we currently have, with the exception that, you know, if AR2 right now does have public water but without public sewer, you can go down to a half of an acre. This would say that the minimum lot area for AR2 is one acre. And then the maximum number of principal residences is one and only one. And then with the option of an accessory dwelling unit. Again, that road frontage being 100 feet. Your lot width at building line being 100 feet. And then the setbacks didn't change for AR2, but the principal building height again at 40 feet. So I can stop if you have any questions or we can move forward.
Are we gonna go over the narrative for these?
We can.
Okay, so there, there, there is one change which affects AR2. And so traditionally, when, you know, let's say prior to a year, maybe a year and a half ago, the AR2, whenever it would come up for rezoning, really would have, you know, one principal, you know, purpose or one that was predominant, which was, you know, I wanna cut off a piece of property for a family member or if it was settling in a state or something to that effect. And that has kinda morphed into this using those, you know, smaller lot size requirements for purposes of subdividing for development. And so while we were gonna address some of that in what we're recommending in AR3, one of the reasons we didn't get rid of AR2 is because we, we did wanna protect the, those, those subdivisions for family and estate purposes. And we put that in the narrative. And so similar to where we can require now a, someone sign an affidavit saying that this is for a family member or this is, you know, for, to settle an estate, that the, that the change in the narrative or the description of AR2 is solely for that purpose. And then if you wanna subdivide, you know, for the sake of selling a piece of land, we're giving an additional option, which is AR3, which is a little bit larger pieces of property. And I'll let Chelsea take it from there.
I have a question on the AR1. It looks like AR1 versus AR2, we're allowing two buildings on each.
Yes.
Why not go ahead and allow a couple of accessory structures on AR1 to differentiate that between AR2? Because I can see people, okay, we can have two residences on an AR1, but I can't have a garage. You know, now they're coming back to, to the board for variance to have a garage and their own accessory structure, if it's truly gonna be split up, unless I'm reading this wrong.
So if you wanted to have, when you say garage, you mean like a garage with a living quarters on top of it?
Yeah, maybe, not necessarily that, but just, just detached garage, some kind of accessory structure.
So we do.
There's provision for that?
Yeah, and so this is just if you can reside in the, in the dwelling.
Oh, this is residences only.
So I don't think there are restrictions towards the amount of units in AR1 for garages, barns, that sort of thing.
Some of those tracts are thousands of acres.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You know what I mean?
Of course, of course. That's why I said, it would make sense to have, but we've already got provision of that. So when you define accessory structure, you're talking about something, a dwelling?
Yeah, so accessory dwelling unit is what we're putting here, but we don't, and you gotta correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is AR1, we don't put restrictions on.
Oh, I see, accessory dwelling unit.
On accessory, just accessory units, dwell, not non-dwelling units.
Right.
Structures.
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions?
So the difference is I can have basically two addresses on an AR1 and I can only have one in an AR2.
Correct, cuz you'd only have one primary.
Gotcha, okay.
Residence. Well, is that, could you get?
Well, you would still have to have for an accessory dwelling unit, because it is a, a residence, you would still have that address. I think that's where the definition of accessory dwelling unit is going to come into play and what an accessory dwelling unit is. So that's, that's where it's gonna matter.
But would it, would it have its own mailing address? An ADU versus a second primary residence?
Yes.
It could.
Yes.
I still see the, not much, I don't see the difference between the two. I've got two dwelling units on AR1, I got two dwelling units on AR2.
What's a primary in ADU?
Some of the setbacks are different, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really the most, yeah. I see what you're saying, I think it's the difference between the two. Accessory dwelling versus.
Well. So I think, you know, for, for AR1, you can, you can use, you can have that, that second principal dwelling. So whether you want it to be a mobile home or a site-built home. Or you can have the accessory dwelling unit, whether you want it to be, you know, above your, your garage or something of that nature. Where in AR2, you know, your principal residence is gonna be your site-built home, your mobile home, you're not gonna have that option to have that second mobile home. So I think you can have the accessory dwelling unit, which I think is going to help offer, you know, an option for.
So accessory dwelling unit would have to be like a multi-use.
Right, so it would have to be something.
I guess.
Right.
Maybe a pool, maybe a pool house.
Like a pool house or.
I see, okay, okay. If somebody could live in it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I guess where I'm getting hung up on, I got two, two residences. But it's okay, I mean, what.
One's gonna be addressed.
Just trying to think of the questions that people would have and what they become, you know, would this, you know, necessitate coming for us when they really don't need to and stuff like that?
The only thing I'd like to make sure of, and I'm sure, I mean, I don't know that it's addressed, is even in AR1, if there are two primary dwellings, I think one of them should be, the owner should, should be occupy one of them. You know, rather than somebody just putting two rentals on AR1, you know, it's one thing if you live there and you have this other house and wanted to rent it or let your adult child live in it, whatever. Just my opinion.
No, absolutely.
Which now, I guess it is allowed with it, cuz that's family. Right now, we do allow family.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Now we're opening the door to beyond that, so.
Which I think's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just what they tell us anyway.
We've all talked about that, just.
It might not be what they do.
Housing, affordable housing options for young people.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
You can speak.
AR3.
Absolutely.
Straighten me out, Ryan.
Anytime you can chime in.
Straighten me out.
You can take the mic with you.
Bring, bring the wisdom.
Well, I just.
Keep it away from Brittany.
I just wanted to say part of the.
Say your name.
Ryan Thompson. Part of the reason, we spent a lot of time on this, like, a lot related to it, whether or not the definition does it well. There was a lot of concern related to the implications of a large AR1 having the ability to have more than even two, right? Cuz there, there could be a wise person out there that could leverage that and have a lot of rental property on one large piece of property. The reason we went accessory on AR2, and hopefully the definition covers this, but if we don't get into that and it doesn't well, then we would. But there's a lot of debate too about it, like, people will come back and ask for subdivisions for two primary to make a lot that's able to get a mortgage, right? Cuz you can't get a mortgage on, if it doesn't have a separate property. So we felt, I think as a committee, right, that the accessory prevented that issue from being able to pop up because it was very clear that second unit on a small, one-acre AR2 lot would never be a justification for anybody to propose some other rezoning associated. It is an accessory unit to that primary use, primary unit only, so.
I got you, that makes sense, I appreciate that.
And I guess in AR2, well, I don't know if the, the lot size would change, but they could potentially go down to a half acre if they say, well, I have a community well, I'm gonna serve it.
Well, we're eliminating, we're getting rid of that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm saying, I mean, yeah, yeah, currently.
And to Phil's point, affordable housing even on the AR2.
Yeah. That's right.
Had, really had family there.
Yeah.
AR3.
All right. So let's take a look now at our proposed AR3 ordinance. This is the clean version of the, of the entire AR3 ordinance. So again, this is that 2.5 acre. So moving from that, you know, the larger AR1 option, you know, maybe not having that, you know, the one acre, going down to the one acre as AR2 allows, and giving that option for a larger, a larger lot area. Like AR1, this does give the option for a maximum of two residential units. So either two principal dwellings or one principal dwelling and one accessory dwelling unit. And then again, everything is the same as AR1 with the exception of the setbacks. There is a minor difference in the setbacks. The rear yard setback is 35 feet. And the side yard setback is 20 feet. But again, that principal building height is 40 feet as well. But to Tim's point and to what's been stated previously, this is that two and a half acre lot, so, you know, we don't have to go completely down to one acre, so.
So, and I, cuz they're not side by side, but would you say AR3 and AR1 setbacks are pretty similar?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any questions?
And then the rest of, of the changes are really delineated in using the table of permitted uses to really kind of determine what's, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. One thing that we did not put in the table of permitted uses is the, like, kind of the rural business use. You know, so if someone wants to open up a, you know, kind of a small little body shop at an AR1 piece of property, we don't put that as a permitted use under the table of permitted uses. We just simply put a separate line at the bottom of the TPU that basically says, you know, AR. you know, AR one are acceptable for any rural business use zoning. And that way, we don't have to like pick and choose as to now, as to what can be subject to a, what can be subject to a rural business use or home occupation, is that right?
So rural residential business and rural business.
Residential business, that's it.
So those two are actually part of the table of permitted uses. So if it's a conditional use in AR one under residential business, then that, you know, someone comes forward with a residential business that is allowed or conditional use in AR one.
And, and no one can make a claim that it's by right, I can, I can put this business on my AR one property. You have to get that rural business or residential business conditional approval by the board every time.
Your accessory structures for agriculture, is that barns?
Right, so.
Stables, silos?
Right, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Hog sheds.
How does that factor into setbacks and whatnot for others?
So still have to meet setbacks? So accessory structures right now, the ordinance reads that they have to be five feet from the rear property line and then five feet from the side setback. So we still have to take that into account, the, the actual setback for accessory structures. But specifically, Committee One, we talked about this, it was for the actual building height. Now, for the principal building height, they've raised it to forty feet, but, you know, grain silos and such like that, I mean, they can be, they can be much higher than that. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, you guys didn't have to hear, you know, multiple variances if there was a, you know, a building that was, you know, agricultural, for agricultural purposes, like, like that.
You got a four-story barn.
Which, which does bring up an interesting point of the, is that one of the ways that we just figured out how to move on when we were trying to, in the process of trying to figure out, you know, what, what needs to be included and what doesn't need to be concluded, is that we just accepted the fact that this is going to be a, kind of a living document. And so we, the goal is to really get the best product we can now. And if there's some sort of loophole that somebody finds in the future that we weren't necessarily thinking about, then we can, then we can, then the board can make a text amendment and change it.
Yeah, and absolutely, to Tim's point, if there's something in here that you're like, you know, this absolutely needs to change or you have suggestion, please, you know, for committee and for us, we, we definitely want the suggestions to be able to move forward.
And this will be on the agenda on the third, is that right?
The twentieth, actually.
Oh, the twentieth, okay.
What did we, what did we finalize on the accessory structures the other day?
Twenty-five.
It was the second, but it was to be equal to the primary?
Uh, yes, sir. So that is the agricultural districts. So we can move forward to, these are your current standards for your B one, B two, B three. Again, these are your charts. As you saw in agricultural districts, again, with the business districts, we took a lot of the, the text out of the ordinance and it has that intent statement, but then it says refer to the table of permitted uses. You know, refer to the buffer ordinance, one, to keep it concise, but to also, you know, kind of make it more clear and easy to understand as well. But, so these are your current standards, I, I know it's a little difficult to read there. A lot of it is, you know, meeting the minimum site design requirement. And then in B one, there's a maximum building height of thirty-five feet. And then in B one and B two, this is interesting, there's a maximum density for mixed use resident, residential of twelve dwelling units per acre. And then in B three, there's a maximum building height of sixty feet, so that's what's current.
And I'll say the, the one narrative that kind of sticks out and, and Ryan may want to add to this because he really, what was the driving force behind it is, you know, B two and B three are really set apart by, by their, what's permitted in the, in the table of permitted uses. B one is the same, but B one really has more of a precise narrative for kind of your rural commercial, so that it is the type of business that supports, you know, the community that surrounds it.
That immediate community.
Yeah, that, that immediate community. So we tried to pick and choose, you know, the permitted uses that meet, that would meet that standard. But it also, but we put it in the narrative just so, you know, people have a better understanding of it.
And Ryan Thompson, the, one of the things we added to, yeah, we felt that, that the, the title, neighborhood business was there, but the intent didn't really clearly define that. So as we went through the table of permitted uses, which was, was a challenge for sure, it's a long list, was looking at that, right, wasn't serving the neighborhood. But one of the other things that we all landed on and I thought was really well is keeping in mind that to be appropriate for the neighborhood, the scale of the building mattered. So we put that, asked for that limitation on the square footage total, so that eight thousand square feet and then the next one's fifty thousand and so on. So that was a protection we thought might help to keep the scale of a building being out of place with an adjacent neighborhood.
Yep, so, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, so the, the other key thing in here which we didn't put, which is new for commercial is, is the green space requirement. Green space requirements for commercial, a little bit tricky because, you know, generally you want green space requirement because you want folks to kind of make a property look nicer from the front appearance. So, and so not only did we, did we put a, a fifteen percent of the total lot area for green space, but we also said that at least fifty percent of the street frontage, the area in front of the building, would have to, you know, be landscaped. And, you know, kind of with a, with a highway aesthetic so that it, so you're not hiding the green space, you know, in, in the back. And so it, it is a kind of a minimum requirement. I know we're not going to be breaking any grounds, but we don't have anything right now. So I think, you know, people can easily do that and, you know, meet that kind of requirement.
What that brings up, something I'm particularly interested in is trying to reduce or do something with the parking requirements. I know a lot of jurisdictions are getting rid of all parking requirements. Because honestly, that's up to the business, if you don't want to have parking, you're not going to have customers. But I guess the trick is making sure they're not parking out on public road. You know, so you do have to provide some, but it doesn't mean, you want to, what would be parking lot should be, become more green space, I guess. You know, similar to what we see in, in neighborhood developments. There's a little balance there, I don't know, that's getting more technical, but I'll let you.
So parking and buffers and just general tree things, we haven't really gotten into that, right?
And I'm done stepping in.
But I would say from the parking standpoint, I am a big believer, you're right, a lot of places are going.
And I'm, I'm fine with overflow parking that goes in, that parks on, on.
A parking maximum? The only thing I would say to be cautious of is you've got to think about, okay, well, we think about a typical development scenario where you're going and building new, but if it was an area that was appropriate, that was transitioning, you would like, where a restaurant, a house became a restaurant, then a minimum parking standard probably would be very important because some of the standards that we're saying, we're getting rid of some of it and saying the development standards, if you meet them, you meet it, kind of thing. And that parking would drive a lot of things associated with that, just as we get to that, be cautious with the, with that.
I just hate seeing large seas of concrete, asphalt is not used.
Now, keep in mind, some of this is going to be addressed. A lot of our commercial, our Bs, certainly our B twos and B threes are going to be automatically in a commercial corridor overlay. So they'll have additional landscape requirements that they have to meet for there. But these are the minimal requirements when you're outside of that.
That's right, that's right.
One other thing that, you know, Ryan mentioned that we haven't gone through, you know, kind of every, you know, all of the components of this, but we did have the discussion on buffers and the kind of unique situation that are, you know, when you, when you have two Bs next to each other or two industrials next to each other, you know, you have that undisturbed buffer requirement, right? So we're not talking about between a B and a residential or an I or a residential, but we are talking about two similar intensity zonings and how, A, that brings the buffer down to something like, was it like fifteen or twenty feet or?
Yes.
Yeah, and to kind of narrow, and then it says that that buffer has to be undisturbed. So you end up having a very thin piece of property with a lot of scrub pine.
Holding water because you hadn't designed, been able to design the stormwater in it.
Where one of the things we discussed was between similar, they're still, they're still going to be required to have the buffer there, but they can, you can go in there and do a landscape buffer instead. If you have a, you'd have to provide the county kind of a landscape plan if you're going to disturb the buffer between two business or two industrial pieces of property.
And I'm assuming that's not just those little plants that's about this high, that would have to be some.
Yeah, if you're going to, yeah, so it, and I, and I don't, we didn't go into that much detail of it, but I think we can easily, there's other jurisdictions have done that. Matter of fact, we, we can use the, the language that we have in the commercial corridor overlay.
Yeah, that'd probably be good, because that, I think there's some trees involved in that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have to be a certain dimension or height or something, yeah.
Right. The other thing that we put in here and, and we probably get some kickback on it. Matter of fact, we, we got a little bit of a kickback from, from a gas station that's going in, but they understood after we explained it to them, which was the, was the sidewalk requirements. Well, if you don't, you got to start somewhere, right? And so if it's a case where it's clearly a place where we want to, as businesses begin to develop or, or be redeveloped, properties begin to redevelop, we wanted to discuss the requirement about getting sidewalks in front of those businesses. Now, there are some instances where that's not going to make any sense. They're just never going to put a sidewalk there, it's going to be like one business and then like, you know, two miles before every, anything else. But in that case, and we're just kind of working out the details of it, was the potential to trying to set up kind of a pay, payment in lieu of construction that can go into a county highway, county sidewalk construction fund, that we can then use that money to kind of fill those gaps, right? And so that, you know, if we've got two properties and kind of a vacant lot that's got like a cell tower on it or something like that, they're never going to put a piece of sidewalk in there that we can put one in the right of way to connect the two. So just a, kind of a thought that, that we were throwing out there may work, may not work, but, but we figure you got to start somewhere.
Similar to a tree fund or something.
What?
Similar to how like a tree fund would be set up.
Correct, right, and, and quite frankly, it's similar to what we're, in the beginning, talked about when it comes to reuse, right? That you can do, you know, a reuse payment in lieu of construction of the purple pipe so that, you know, we can find a home for it somewhere else.
All right. All right, so that's, so moving out of commercial. So this is your current industrial standard, so I one, and right now, I one encompasses the light industrial and the heavy industrial. You know, the goal is to break those out into two separate light industrial and heavy industrial. So, again, just your current heavy. So here's the proposed light industrial standards. Again, having that language in there about the storage of toxic and hazardous waste, chemicals and materials, that was in, is in current, our current ordinance, but keeping that in there. And then having the, the minimum lot area. But what you'll find is that the setbacks and the building height changing, again, because, you know, it is, it must meet the design standard. So, you know, having that, that flexibility that, that the board will have to be able to set those standards. And then adding the green space requirement, at least fifteen percent, you know, of the area shall be designated as green space. So, and that does include landscaped areas, your required buffers, tree plantings. So that is something that's new, that's been proposed. So that is your.
And then obviously, what determines what can go where is the TPU, right? So rather than have the previous or the current, actually, is where you have this one industrial and you can put a chemical plant or, you know, you can put a, you know, a fifty thousand square foot warehouse. Both very different uses. But you can put them both in I one right now. You just have to have a bigger buffer for the chemical plant. Now, by really saying that you're light industrial, you're going to be stuck to these list of items that, you know, you're not going to have the option to put an intense industrial use on that property if it's on light industrial. Heavy industrial, obviously, will have a lot more stringent requirements. Heavier buffers will also have conditional uses in there. But it'll also be, you know, it'll also get more scrutiny from the board because they, you know that heavy industrial does mean, chemical manufacturing does mean smoke stacks, those sort of things. So it, it provides a little bit more control, I think, on the board as to what gets approved. Because ninety percent of the time, when something is being zoned industrial, maybe not ninety percent, but a lot of the times, they don't know what the end user is, right? You know, they're, they're, they're rezoning it for an industrial park or for some future user. And, and if you just kind of, you know, give them a blank check of saying you can do anything industrial there, you know, you, you end up with some of the problems that we've had now. So by separating this out to light industrial and heavy industrial, again, we feel that, that you'll have that control. Not saying that all having, everything that's intense is heavy industrial, there are still several conditional uses in heavy industrial as well. So.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the junk cars, the junk yards, the container storage, all of those will, are heavy industrial but are going to require conditional approval in addition to the reason, to the heavy industrial zone.
Should we consider an I three that really gets into your, you know, stuff? I mean, I don't know.
Heavy, heavy, heavy.
Yeah, or do we just leave some of that conditional in the, in the heavy and deal with it that way?
Yeah, I mean, I, I say you probably leave it, I mean, you could do it either which way.
It would be obviously the highest of bars to, you know.
Right.
I mean, we did talk about that maybe some of those uses that you've worked through several times that you don't just want to leave them up to proposing the conditions or get there to go ahead in the, in the code to say, should it be considered? And then there would be a list of, at a minimum, you've got to do this with that site. I don't think we're quite there with those. But to me, that would be a way to address it, to keep them out to have another district. Because, I mean, a heavy industrial district should be able to accommodate, you know, it, with the right things placed on it in the right spot in heavy industrial. I think we, we landed on like, yeah, street frontage, like if it's going to have an. I think we landed on like, yeah, street frontage, like if it's going to have an impact to the adjacent roadway, maybe it's, that's a condition you consider that you wouldn't approve it. But if it was in the back where nobody could see it, that's a justifying condition, so.
And, and some definitions, but this is another thing that we've struggled with, you know, you know, maybe okay in light industri, you know, like I think we did like jewelry manufacturing or metallurgy, right? Well, that could be a heavy industrial use, right? You know, if they're melting, it's melting, right? And so, you know, or it could be, you know, some mom and pop be, you know, you know, you know, putting together hand-making jewelry. So, you know, we, we, to, as an abundance of caution, we just made those conditional. So that, you know, that when that person has a use and just say, look, I'm just, you know, putting together, you know, little pieces of, you know, minerals and stones and so on and so forth, nothing complicated, then you can prove that conditionally. But also, we did the green space requirement, very similar to the buffers, very similar to the businesses.
Okay.
So...
I do like that.
So, kind of coming full circle, accessory dwelling units, these are the definitions we, we've sort of landed on, again, for your AR districts and then your residential districts. And, and again, this being a living document, so, you know, this is what we've, we've come up with in committee, but...
The, the point being that, you know, in A, that a accessory dwelling unit for a larger, more rural AR property should have more options than a, you know, potentially small R property.
So would this cover like a barn dominium?
Yes.
Because I've told Steve about that, because I'm starting to have that come up in District Three. I've got someone out on Sawmill Road that's going to be, that is wanting to do that. They want to build the, I guess, barn dominium, and in about two years, they want to build their personal residence, but they're going to be living in that for about two years. And later, they're using it for storage and a place for their grandkids to stay and, but...
Yeah, so I guess in that case, I mean, it, it, you know, that, they're building their primary residence as the barn dominium, and that primary residence then gets switched to a accessory dwelling unit when the main house is built. And so I don't, I mean, we do have those limitations where you can't build a, like a, like a garage, a non-dwelling unit first, right?
So could it be something where we just add some language to this?
Sure, we can clarify that.
I guess it's a section just to kind of, because Steve said there's a way now where they could get, and guess, an ag address? I don't know if that's what Katie was going to go through.
That's what we ran it too, but then nobody wanted it.
But...
They didn't want it.
But the person, they're like, well, I really want to go about it the right way and, but I don't think y'all have a box that I can do this right now. And I said, well, let me, I'll start talking with Steve, and Steve said, well, one of the next workshops, we'll talk about it and just, I don't know, you bringing that up, looking at it.
And I think they should be able to, to rent their barn dominium once they build their house if they wanted, as long as they're living in the main house. What's wrong with renting it to a young couple that just got married? I mean, I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah.
My two cents, you know, I mean, yeah. But again, I, I, to me, it's important that the, the property owner live in the main house rather than having two rental units on it.
Yeah.
My two cents, anyway.
And so the unique thing about the, when you, and this is really all, where we dwelled into the R districts is how we define an ADU for an R property because they're smaller, right? You don't want someone to, even if they, you know, they can squeeze in, you know, a, a small little mobile home in their backyard, you know, you don't want that option on an R property. So in that case, we limited it really to like a, above a detached garage, and then in some cases, where you can actually have a separate living unit attached to the home. So, it's a little, and that's the, kind of the best picture there. It's not a duplex, you know, they're still a primary residence, but they are, but they are attaching a, you know, a second unit to the home. You can do a garage conversion where that's attached to the home, but, but this is, but this is different than a duplex because both of those units could be primary.
Yeah.
There were always, this, one of them has to be an accessory.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, I used to work for a builder, and they started doing this where, I forget what they called them, next gen houses or something, where they'd actually have a, a separate like grandmother's little suite that had its own little separate entrance, own little tiny kitchen, and then it had a door that connected to the rest of the house, but it was, was its own little independent unit.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of what we're, we're, and you can have a detached accessory dwelling unit, but our point is being that for ours, and we could change this in the future, maybe a little backyard cottage, tiny house would be okay. But our thought to start off with, if it's going to be detached, it's in a smaller lot like R one, R five, it's above the garage.
Yeah, I can't read lips. I'd be careful probably with a tiny house.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe like a one-bedroom pool house type thing.
Yeah, right, and that, and that's another option, is a pool house.
Yeah, that...
Is that what we have, or do we have anything else?
Lastly, just kind of hitting back on the table of permitted uses, committee did thoroughly look through the uses within the table. I know it wasn't, you know, their specific charge to go through that table, but you can, you cannot look at the residential districts without actually looking at, or any of the zoning districts, without looking at what is permitted in those districts. Specifically, as you look at it, we did add a reference section, so what we plan to do with that is taking the definitions, once those are approved, and putting that definition number that you'll see next to the definition in that section so that should folks want to know, hey, what's the definition of this?
Yeah.
They'll have easy access, know exactly where to find it.
And they worked hard on this. Every single one of these lines has a definition associated with it.
Yeah, I think it's like five hundred and twenty.
Yeah, five hundred and twenty, and then we're, and so if we're missing something in the definition, you can always amend the definition.
Yeah, we're missing one. I already saw the overnight truck stop. There's no definition there unless it's not alphabetical.
No, it may, it may be missing.
And that's one we would really need to define.
Okay.
Because I would make sure that they offer diesel fuel or something there to define it as a truck stop, otherwise you're going to have a big can of worms.
Yeah, you're going to have a bunch of truck parking.
Exactly, and I got some of the same issues and some other stuff.
Yes, if you find, if there's anything you find, please send it over to us, we can, we can get that rectified. And then lastly, it does include all of our zoning districts, so it's going to include, it does include R six, even though we don't zone anything to that, and it does include the I one, so although we're moving away from I one because we do have that zoning district out there, we do have to keep it on.
And the preference would be not to force rezone somebody and deal with all the headache in that, that if they're in a, what we call a zombie district, a district that we're no longer approving anything to, R six, I one, then...
Grandfathered in that case.
Yeah, grandfathered in, so.
Like your warehouse facilities in your transload, I would mirror those, the one and the same, really, there's no difference.
Well, the, so that was an area of contention for us, and so, the level of intensity for a...
Transload or cross stockings, way more intense, traffic wise.
Not really. I'd see a lot of, there's a lot of warehouses that offer transload services, and they do more than transload facilities do. They're just, they have a billion...
I'm going to let Ryan, because we, we, this was an area of, that we debated, and so, and the example we use is, is Estes versus, you know, a large warehouse, you know, a storage warehouse.
In that case, you'd have to define it as a less than truckload facility.
Yes, and, so you go.
Well, so whether or not the definition hits the intent, it was the fact that the intensity of the truck traffic is different at the two heights.
Cross dock would be a better use of the word because you're moving from one side of a warehouse to another. Walmart, for example.
Well, but cross dock can be considered just a building wide enough to have docking on both sides, right? And that still is conventional warehousing. Transload was, and there's a certain minimum width that the building gets to that it can no longer function really as warehousing, you're just moving goods back and forth inside of it, and that's what we suggested to try to define that, that once the building got below that, it would be considered a transload, whether or not they called it a warehouse or not, the code was going to consider it a transload facility and it would be more intense.
Yeah, but you can have the same volume of traffic with the same, doing the same thing in a warehouse as you do a transload, even if, you know, you can put them on, okay, we're going to do this on door two and three, and just swap door two and three, and it's going to happen the same frequency and same traffic as a warehouse, so that, it doesn't matter to me where you put those, as long as they mirror, because they're essentially going to be the same thing. Or could be. Now, when you get to Estes, that's a good point, they are less than truckload, so less than truckload, they bring everything they have in its piece build. So it's going to be by the pallet, they're going around picking up what they call on a pedal run, they bring it to the, the facility at the end of the day, they combine and transload all that to what they call schedules, it may go to Atlanta, Charlotte, all these major hubs out every night. There's a lot of movement on an LTL versus just a transload. So that'd be the only difference between the two that I would see any, it might not even be heavier, it would just be, but those trucks are going to stay local during the day, and you're going to have schedules at night moving out. We can get in the weeds on it.
Yeah, well, our, our thought was, as a committee, that it was more so, the transload was more closer to what you just described, so if it needs to be defined different or if the definitions name needs to change, we just thought that it was a difference in intensity related to that. We didn't want to preclude a conventional warehouse from being able to be efficient and having locked doors on both sides if it could do it, and just because it had doors on both sides, it then triggered itself being to a heavy industrial district. We just thought that was not an efficient use of land.
Yeah, they're trying to acquire, I mean, the more you can transload versus warehouse is the better. So if I've got a hundred thousand square foot warehouse and I want, if I can transload a whole bunch, I'm going to, because then I'm not storing, and I'm just, it's a really, it's a...
So maybe we just need to change the...
It's kind of, just, yeah, I just, I would allow, whatever, it doesn't matter where you, where you allow that, as long as it's not in a B.
Well, this exhaustive list of TPU, it's definitely spent a bunch of time on it for months.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's really sticky.
About December, we touched on it for, monthly for about five months, and staff's done a great job of trying to, the definitions were a huge add because we kept coming across, well, what does this mean? And it's not defined, so.
This is huge, this is really good, and to the chairman's point, you know, trucking's a heavy industrial use, and we're trying to keep it there. General truck parking, same thing, I would not put that in a B as conditional in AR either. If you want eighty thousand pounds moving down a non-truck route, that's what you're going to have. So I would remove that and leave that where we did originally in the heavy industrial uses.
So what's the best form to communicate changes?
You or Kimberly?
Kimberly.
Kimberly. Kay Barnett, I'll, I'll, I'll send out her email to everybody.
You want me to just hold off on all that and...
Yeah, just, just do that, combine it.
I thought we were going to talk about it some day, so, okay.
So what's, what's our, I guess, plan going forward? Are we, I mean, if we get to a point where we think some of these are good, we would pull them out of the moratorium?
And, and we've already started advertising for the stuff that we've discussed tonight for the twenty...
Twentieth.
Twentieth meeting.
So May twentieth, we'll be pulling some of these out?
Pulling some of these out, but not the Rs and not the PD. Those, those are still remaining.
It tends to get the ARs, the Bs and everything we're presenting here out.
Yeah. That's right, and so, just so you know, when we have our next meetings, we'll be digging into the, the Rs, and since we've really already handled the, the permitted uses on the Rs, it's really going to kind of dig deep into the design standards. And our thought is, once we get through, you know, you'll have your, your R one, R two, R three, and R fi, R four, which is mobile homes, and R five. Once we get through those and then bring it back to you, then later, we will then go back, well, after the board is done with, the steering committee is done with their work, and then just fine tune the PD, because the PD determination is really going to be based on what you all approve in the, in the R districts. So, our goal right now is to tackle those. Some of them are going to be fairly easy, some of them are going to be complicated like R fives. I think the multifamily stuff, you know, kind of coming up with what our, what our standards are going to be for that, you know, is going to be a long conversation, but that's, that's what we have left.
Brittany, Ryan, thank you.
Actually, second reading.
Yeah, it's a pretty phenomenal job you guys have done.
Second reading. And the group.
Yeah, no doubt.
It was much better than us.
Yeah, thank you both.
And they, and some of our meetings are about, you know, you know, three hours long. I mean, it's, and they, particularly these two, they, they stick it out, so...
You can tell it's an enormous amount of work went into this, no doubt about it.
And so first reading of, of these first batch, AR, B, and I is on the twentieth, second reading is on June third.
Got it. It's a birthday gift to him.
That's right.
Do they get posted, or are they posted?
Can't get your name.
Brian Thompson. We had talked about like making it forward-facing like the T-Splus page, just so the general public can see those as opposed to them being into the board agenda. We just heard some feedback that, to see changes like this, to have to dig into the board packet, it should be just kind of forward-facing on the website, so that would be, I think, I think between now and then, it'd be beneficial to show that.
Yeah, we'll make it on the, on the front page of the website and put it on the Facebook page.
How challenging would it be when we get to the Rs to do some visual representation?
That, that is absolutely going to be included in there. We have some right now from the consultant, but we don't necessarily know what the, what the steering committee, new ideas that they're going to bring up, so we'll just add some stuff to.
Got you. Is that all we got?
That's all we got.
Cool. One minute's back.
Look at that, one minute to go.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Take a brief stretch?
Yeah. Yeah.
Please.[464.78]
And Lord, I'm thankful for all these men and women in this room that want the best for Effingham County. And Lord, I just pray for wisdom for them. I pray that you will guide and direct them. And Lord, that the things that we seek, that is, you know, the things that are beneficial for you and for your will. And so, Lord, I just pray over this meeting here tonight, and I pray that you will guide and direct the paths of all these men and women. Lord, we love you. It's in Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If you will join me and rise as you're able with the, join me with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kiefer. Moving on to our agenda approval. Madam Clerk, we have any changes in our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several changes tonight. Go with me to the second page of the agenda. Under unfinished business, there has been a request for a postponement of this item for Mr. Justin Webb for rezon five acres on 200 Claioshawnee Road. The petition is to postpone this item until July 17th. Go further with me to the third page of the agenda for items number four and five. I'm sorry, number four only. Consideration to approve a development agreement between Greenland developers and Effingham County. The applicant has requested to postpone this item until June 3rd. Item number seven on the same page. Consideration to approve a proposal for TerraCon for a master services agreement. This is a duplicate item on the agenda. If you note, item number 12 is the same item. So this is to be removed. Page four of the agenda on planning board, item number one and two. The applicant is requesting to postpone this item until June 3rd. It is an application by Manning Graham to rezon 33.5 plus or minus acres on Old Augusta Road from AR-1 to I-1. And our last change is on the last page of the agenda. This items number 17 and 18. It is a public hearing for Mr. Jimmy Morris. It's a variance to allow for accessory structure. This is located at 1073 US Highway 80, and staff has requested this item be withdrawn. And if I can go back, under our consent agenda. Item number four is a policy to amend and publish section, section 2.0. Equal opportunity inclusion of the human resources standards of practice. This item is to be postponed until the June. I'm sorry, until the May. I'm sorry. What is that date?
Twenty.
May 20.
May 20th, to the May 20th meeting. Those are your changes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as stated. County Manager, would you elaborate on the Greenland development, please?
Yes, and so it was a little unclear on the, on the staff report on that. This is not a new rezoning. This has actually been rezoned. This was drone, rezoned to B2 some time ago. And matter of fact, it was approved for a sketch plan all the way back in May of 2022. So we weren't, they weren't requesting any new type of rezoning on the property. The zoning is already there. The sketch plan is already approved. What they were, were requesting is a developer agreement to provide some clarity on the access road. So I've kind of asked them if we could just kind of take a look at that and tweak it, give it one more lot, round of tweaking with regards to that. It's kind of a little stub of an access road that the, that the county would provide. And so that's why we're bringing it back on the 20th.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, there was a little, little information out there. I want to be clear on that one, that this was nothing new. This was existing. Perfect. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion with the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, minutes. Consideration to approve the April 15th, 2025 work session and regular meeting minutes. Have a motion.
I'd like to add something.
Sure.
On the regular meeting minutes, I'd like it stated clearly that I was not happy with the current auditor and the fact that the last two years they've given a really late audit. Actually, this year putting us in some jeopardy in terms of getting something to the state on time that will impact our financial dealings. So I'd like it clear in there that I made that statement.
We can certainly make that change, but just as a point of education for the board and everyone else. Minutes are a summation of action taken and not a discussion in the meeting. That's why we maintain the recordings, but we will definitely get that added for you, Ms. Beth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Any other alterations to the minutes? Not only entertain a motion.
Do you like to make a motion to that effect?
To what?
Just to include with your changes.
Yeah, it does require a motion?
Yeah, to approve the minutes.
Okay, yes. Yes, I approve the minutes with the additional changes.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number seven, public comments. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Item number eight, correspondence. The agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented in meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Item number nine, consent agenda. This section, section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area on the agenda. Item number one, consideration to approve to renew the small government enterprise agreement with ESRI Incorporated. Item two, consideration to approve a probation services agreement with Judicial Alternatives of Georgia Incorporated for the Superior Court of Effingham County. Item number three, consideration to approve the continuation of the memorandum of understanding with Effingham County Board of Education for the use of schools as disaster shelters. Item number five, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm a revised quote for Paycor. Item number six, consideration to approve the continuation of the memorandum of understanding with the Effingham County Board of Education for the use of seven school buses for evacuation purposes. If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to discuss a couple of items.
True.
It, and I don't know if they need to be pulled. You can educate me on this, Ms. Johnson. I'm just the, the signatures on these memorandum of understandings. Some of them are 10 or 12 years old. And I just feel like that there needs to be, you know, I've got, one of them has Mr. Kessler's signature on it. Randy Sharehouse is on the BOE as well. You know, those people are no longer there. So.
We can, we can refresh the documents, new signatures.
I think it's time to refresh the documents. So I don't know how we want to handle. That's all I want to do is refresh the document.
We can do that on our end, and when the chairman signs the documents that are approved, we'll have him sign that one.
Yeah, I can make sure that they're the right. I noticed that Rain Diesel's still on there as well, so.
That's all I wanted. I just feel like it should be updated.
Very good. No further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number 10, unfinished business. This contains items held from a previous agenda. Item number three, consideration to approve the second reading to amend section 3.3 accessory structures in residential districts of Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading approved, April 15th, 2025. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number four, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by James William Exley for a variance from section, section 6.2 to reduce the required width of an access easement located on Highway 119, map number 402, parcel number one in the 3rd district. This was postponed from the April 15th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number 11, new business. Consideration to approve to accept a grant award from the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for purchase of generators.
Good evening. Clint Hodges, EMA Director. Several years ago, I believe it was 2018 or 2019, we applied for several emergency generators through the hazard mitigation program. We are finally, have gotten the award for them. Originally, it was for nine generators, and this would have covered 75% of the cost with a 25% local match. Since then, obviously, costs have significantly increased. So my estimate is this could be around a 40 to 45% award. One thing that has happened since then additionally is the Hodgsville lift station was upgraded, and it has backup power on it now. So what we discussed with our representative was if that award dollar could actually be transferred to the other eight generators, which they indicated could, or we could go back through the process and apply for a different location. But this one took this long. There's no telling how long it would take to go back through it. So what we're requesting this evening is to get approval to accept the grant award and apply it to those eight generators. It's going to be two wells, six lift station, excuse me, two wells, five lift stations, and the EMS headquarters.
These will be permanent?
Yes, sir. These are permanent.
Discussion from the board? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the grant funding.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Clint.
Hey, let me, a quick question. We, the, the water provider for some of the community wells in the area had said they were going to be installing generators. I know this is for our, our stuff, but is there any discussion? Have you heard, anybody heard anything about upgrades to the?
Water utility management is putting as, as not right now. I mean, they have started. Some of their well sites do have new generators on them, so they are working through that.
Cool. Thanks.
Move on to item number two. Consideration to approve a final plat and warranty deed for Laurel Grove subdivision Phase 2 located on Highway 30, consisting of 49 lots.
Yes, sir. So EMC is requesting that approval for a final plat for Laurel Grove, Laurel Grove Phase 2. This is 49 lots. It's located on Highway 30. The subdivision does have Effingham County Water and Sewer Utilities, and the roads are dedicated to the county. This is a R6 zoning district. The amenities are being constructed, but are not required to be completed for the Phase 2 final plat approval, and staff does recommend approval of the final plat.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions from the board? Not only entertain a motion.
I'm just making sure. Since this EMC is doing this, do I just recuse myself from this?
Only if your son was involved with the project.
I don't know.
You don't know?
I, I just assume. I'll just, I'd rather just not vote. Do I need to leave?
Yes, ma'am.
You can remain in the room.
It'll be quick. I'll make a motion, we approve the, the final subdivision plat.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number three. Consideration to approve a final plat as presented by Coleman Company for Ramsey Landing Phase 3A, located off of Ebenezer Road, consisting of 52 lots.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the subdivision is off of Ebenezer Road for Ramsey Landing Phase 3A, 452 lots. This subdivision is serviced by the City of Springfield for water and sewer. There is a note here that note five states that the utilities are Effingham County on the plat. That is incorrect. So the plat cannot be recorded until that change is made. The subdivision roads are not dedicated to the county. So a change to note 13 on the plat does need to be clear that they are not county roads. There are also other changes that do need to be made specifically for lot number 3048 and lot number 3043 in terms of the 12,000 square foot minimum for an R1 subdivision. I did hear from Steve Kandler this morning that all property corners were set in the Ramsey 3A subdivision. So he does have that. Staff does not recommend approval for the final plat, but he was waiting for the property corners, and I do know that a representative from Coleman and Company is here, so.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mallory Boyd. I'm with Coleman Company. Chelsea, just to provide a little clarification, the updates were made to the plat.
Okay.
So the physical copy that was signed off on that is in y'all's possession, it does show those updates. The lot 43 and?
48. So 3048 and 3043.
And what were those, those notations?
They do not meet the 12,000 square foot minimum for an R1 subdivision.
I'm not 100% aware of any, any deficiencies on the lot sizes. Everything should have been compliant, but all of the other changes those were made and the fiscal copies that are in the county's possession do meet the criteria. Yes, ma'am.
And then all the property corners are set now?
Yes, ma'am. Those are set.
Okay. So what are we lacking?
I think we need to roll a plat out, I guess.
We, we can certainly do that.
Can you put it up on the screen?
Um, yes, let me. So I do not have the physical.
I mean, if it's not ready, it's not ready.
We've been ready for quite a while.
I don't have a copy of the plat.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Isn't it just on the board?
Do you have the fiscal copy, Ms. Stephanie?
I did not. I, I never received it.
Mallory, has that copy been uploaded to OpenGov? Because that would be how I would be able to pull it.
Should have been, yes, ma'am. I don't know, the signed version won't have been loaded because Steve would have signed it here. I can, I can pull it up and email and email it there real quick if you'd like.
So the two outstanding, what we think is the outstanding issue is there's two, there's two home sites that, that don't meet the minimum standard?
Right, the minimum square footage.
I think those adjustments, I think I recall those now, those were made. I had a discussion with Jonathan on it, and those would have been made prior to us printing and having owners in the county sign. Because I needed some clarity from, from Jonathan. I think he was the one that made those comments.
Jonathan, do you want to come up and, since you've been called?
Hey, Jonathan Holm, county engineer. I'm trying to remember. I know there were some comments made about the frontage for the, the roads that I made, but you guys had addressed those comments. Yeah, those, the lots that you're talking about, I, I don't specifically. I don't specifically recall that, to be honest with you. Yeah, and that was the road frontage piece, but the lot size, I, I don't recall that. So I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we, we're looking up, we can't find the, we can't find the plat, so if, can we come back to this?
Yeah, we can, we can.
And then you can, you can then send it to us, and then if the, if we can clear up on the plat that's been recorded that there is lot sizes on those lots meets or exceeds the requirement, then, then we can move forward with that.
Yeah, if we can get it before meetings end, then yeah, I'll bring it back up here.
Absolutely. Give me just a few minutes. We'll get that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And we'll move on to five? Yeah, we'll move it on to five. Item number five, consideration to approve an application by Greg Coleman for a site plan for the Butler-Belfort Warehouse located at 2063 Old Augusta Road South, zoned I-1, map number 477, parcel number three and four in the 5th district.
Good evening, Liz Sapp, land use planning analyst. The Butler-Belfort Warehouse applicant, Greg Coleman, requests approval for a site plan to construct a warehouse located at 2063 Old Augusta Road South, zoned I-1. The request for approval of a site plan is a requirement of Article 5 Plan and plat requirement section 5.1 sketch plan. The request for approval of a sketch plan is a requirement of section 5.1 sketch plan. The proposed warehouse is approximately 251,000 square feet located on 19.46 acres. Per the site plan submitted, there's a 25-foot buffer and a 50-foot building setback. There's a, there is a 2.95 acre pond just north of the warehouse. The current zoning of the property is I-1, which allows this use. The applicant must meet all county and building design requirements and must be incorporated into the preliminary plan. The finished site shall meet all wetland delineations as required by the Army Corps of Engineers. The finished site shall meet all FEMA requirements. This includes any elevation certificates or documentation, such as a letter of map amendment or a letter of map revision. The site is currently located within a special flood hazard area, Zone A, and must elevate or flood-proof three feet above highest adjacent grade. The finished site will meet all ADA accessible requirements and will, and will be reviewed at the, the development plan review. Site shall meet all access and emergency response operation requirements for emergency responders. Fire suppression systems are required for the warehouse. The warehouses shall meet all emergency responder radio coverage requirements per the International Fire Code. This also includes before and after racking is installed, and the applicant must provide lighting and landscaping plans. The staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete.
And this, the area of this is considered part of our industrial for the future land use as well?
Uh, yes.
It is, yes.
It is.
Okay, perfect. Just want to be clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
I don't. Everything I've seen, it complies with the ordinance.
And it's already resoned, right?
Yes, yes, yes. This is just the.
This is just a sketch one.
Okay, and just for geography reasons alone, this is next to the truck.
Very close.
Is it Evans, STs?
Yes, just north of STs.
Got you.
On the same side?
Yeah.
Same side of the road, yeah.
There's one exit parcel just north and then, yeah. But below the entrance, below Logistics Parkway. So about roughly halfway between STs and Logistics Parkway.
And the property that, that's in between STs and there, isn't that, is that one already resoned as well?
Between STs and that, it is.
477-9.
Is that the entrance to Effingham Business Park?
That's what I could remember. Okay, that's what I thought.
It is.
Okay, perfect. I thought it was just being.
Yes, yes. So this is actually, these two properties were a part of the Effingham Business Center sketch plan originally. It was part of the rezoning. They all went through together. The two owners, the Butler-Belfort family, decided not to, not to sell at that point in time, and now they are under contract. And so that's why we're, while we're here revising the plan with separate access.
Perfect. Just making sure the public clearly understands where this is going.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. With that, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, consideration to approve a proposal from JMT for on-call right-of-way professional services.
Jonathan Holm, county engineer for Effingham. Yeah, this, this contract for JMT is to be an on-call. To, it's pretty much prequalifying them to be a right-of-way specialist for the county. This will help speed up, you know, the right-of-way acquisition that we have with all the capital improvement projects that are currently going on, but also upcoming. And so staff is recommending to approve this contract with alternative one.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number.
Glad you're feeling better.
Yeah, glad to be here.
Item number eight, consideration to approve a quote from Reynolds Warren Equipment Company for the purchase of crack seal equipment.
Yep, Jonathan Holm, county engineer. Purchasing this crack seal equipment will be a good investment for maintaining our road systems that we have in the county. Primarily, this will be used for cracks in the pavement. This will especially be good for normal roads, but also for FDR roads that the county is, you know, starting to use more and more of. It's really important to seal those cracks with FDR roads because those will deteriorate faster than your typical road sections. And the amount that is in this purchase is enough for 10 miles. If there was like a one and a half inch crack that lasted 10 miles long, so this gives us enough quantity to get us started. And we have been talking with EOM. Once, if this were to get approved tonight, EOM would be the ones going out and helping to facilitate that, and that would be in their new contract moving forward with this next fiscal year. Staff is recommending approval. The total purchase number is $136,394.63. So yeah, staff's recommending alternative one.
Kind of mentioned, this is going to be a more efficient way of doing repairs, is that?
Yeah, so the idea is as a crack comes up in the road, you can get out there and seal it immediately versus waiting to, you know, for the road system to completely unravel. This should help preserve the pavement anywhere from five to 10 years in addition to what we're currently doing. So in the long run, this is a very good idea for, I think, the county to get into this, this business since we own all the infrastructure, right, for the county. So definitely, I think, you know, something that we need to, you know, invest a little bit of money, but it will pay dividends for years to come.
The windshield crack versus?
That's right.
Got it.
They make a flex seal that you can just spray on. It's a lot cheaper.
I'm tempted to try it.
Can you make a boat out of a screen door with this stuff?
That's right. Well, they don't show you. It's five minutes later, it starts to sink, but it was good enough for the commercial.
Very good. Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
No discussion. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration to approve and publish new job descriptions for EMA Deputy Director and EMA Specialist.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Sarah Malsoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Tonight, we are here requesting the approval of two new job descriptions, Deputy Director and the EMA Specialist. And so as all of you are aware, we had a really rough storm season, and our EMA has been extremely busy. And then you throw in everything going on as well with DRT, and they are very active right now. And ahead of the new budget year, we're asking for these new job descriptions to be approved. Potentially, we would like to promote our one position, so hopefully this Deputy Director gets approved, and we can go ahead and advance that person, and then we would backfill with the EMA Specialist. So I'm here, and Chief Hodges is here, EMA Director as well, if there's any questions for us.
Just for public knowledge, where do we post our jobs?
Where do we post our jobs? So on the county website. They are also now with Paycor on Indeed. Several other sites, I just, off the top of my head, but we have them all. If they go to our website, it'll follow through, link some to Paycor, and then we promote them within. And then Chief Hodges, if there's anywhere in particular for EMA that he wants to post it, we can do that as well. Yes, sir?
Google search away. Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move that we, um, approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, consideration to approve a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power Company for the installation and maintenance of LED lighting at Baker Park in Springfield, Georgia.
Yes, sir, good evening, Danielle Carver, procurement and contract manager. Um, Baker Park Security Parking Lot Lighting, the, um, county's working with Georgia Power to install new LED, LED lighting at Baker Park. So the project includes both post-top and roadway lights to improve visibility, safety, and, um, overall accessibility for park visitors.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion from the board? If not, entertain a motion.
Have we explored doing our own lighting?
Yes.
I know we talked about that, but like, what is the difference in cost and what assets?
Substantial, and I, Trey, I mean, we, we, for this one, we said, you know, I wonder if what the difference in cost would be and...
I mean, it was 60, 70% higher.
Because, I mean, we're spending 20 grand a year at Georgia Power, after we spend the money on the installation, and that, that's forever, is my concern.
What is your maintenance?
We're getting new generators.
But with the LED technology, you just don't use that much power, and I've done it on a small scale myself and saved tons of money.
But we, we did look at the alternative, uh, for a contractor that's under state contract to, um, to provide lighting. Um, and as Trey said, I mean, we, we, uh, obviously, there would still be some, uh, some cost of operation, but...
Still have electricity.
It was a 60% higher difference, um, to go with the, um, to install our own lights in there, uh, versus the subsidized cost of, of Georgia Power, but of course, you're paying for that over time.
Right.
Uh, as part of the operation costs on it, and then you don't have to worry about maintaining it.
But there was a substantial cost savings.
And I think you're limited on local contractors on something this size to install and maintain.
Right, so that'd be, you know, 120,000 more to install and then maintain ourselves, we'd make that up in five years.
That's what I was going to ask, just maybe moving forward with these types of things, um, if we do, you know, where the ROI kind of meshes at some point.
Sure, and, and so the next time we, well, I'm trying to think, next time maybe when we do, uh, a park lighting, um, non-field lighting.
Six years.
Um, we can tell you where that crossover point is, um, but, um, again, I mean...
Maybe there's a break-even point, we could, no, at least we, the board would know and everybody, all the public would know, here's, here's why. Break-even might be, in this case, six years and...
Yeah, and then what's...
But another one might be 10 years and we'd have to replace.
Right, what's the shelf life of the product?
Exactly, exactly, just, just curious.
But did our design team do a lighting plan or did Georgia Power do a lighting plan?
We, um, well, we worked with two entities, um, uh, to come up with a design plan, and then we, um, uh, and...
Yeah, we had both.
Okay, I was just saying...
So we had the private entity and Georgia Power, they both did a lighting plan on us, and they were both materially similar.
Yeah, gotcha.
Very good, and this, um... Word of terms on the contract here, this, this agreement.
We got the one-time man, uh, pay, prepayment of 196,070 dollars covers the upfront construction and installation costs. The term of the agreement is initial, um, one month, and then after, which automatically renews month-to-month basis, uh, unless termed by either party with 30-day written notice.
Good.
Yeah, your date is forever.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 11, consideration to approve a proposal from Moffett and Nickel and issue a notice to proceed under IDC Contract Number 23-RFQ-U-061.
Yes, sir, Effingham County requested proposals from pre-qualified firms to design improvements at Little McCall, McCall and Ron Station Roads. After evaluating four submissions, Moffett Nickel was selected based on their strong proposal, shortest project timeline, and competitive pricing. This item is for the award recommendation and approval to issue the notice to proceed, so design work can begin, so staff recommends alternative one.
I guess the only question I have on this one is, is quite as significant between the smallest and the largest, can we elaborate on that a little bit? It's what, 200 and...
Well, the timeline also.
Yeah.
Cheap, rank quicker.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm curious to see how...
Maybe new and want the business.
Yeah, Jonathan Holm, county engineer, so, um, essentially what, what they've done, I think, um, what they did, what compared to the other competitors, is, um, they cut out a lot of the requirements that are in the GDOT process, since it is a county road, it's not needed to go through all that extensive process. Um, they did also have survey, um, in, in there, the prices for surveyors was a lot higher in the other, uh, firms' buckets, but, I mean, we, we went through and verified that, um, you know, everything was apples to apples, and, um, not only that, but they're able to do it in a faster turnaround, too. Um, and this is part of the reason why we wanted to do a, you know, a design bid.
Right.
To see, okay, where's everyone at as far as their schedules and pricing?
I'd ask you if this was part of that new procurement process.
Um, it's not a part, it, I mean, we, we have, um, these firms already on the IDC list that we can just go to and select, but I thought, along with county manager, that it'd be helpful to just get a pulse on, you know, where are the different firms stacking up, um, as far as design goes, um, and try to make it, you know, open to all the firms to be able to compete with one another. Um, and this intersection in particular, there was not, uh, historical, you know, reason to give it to one firm or the other, in, in our opinion, so that's why we did this.
Gotcha, and what protections are in place, um, to honor their timeline, if any?
Um, so that's a great question, um, we don't have, uh, liquidated damages in here, I mean, honestly, we just have the schedule, um, and it's a lump sum not to exceed. Um, so, working with Moffett Nickel before in the past, um, you know, I, my, my view on them is high, um, knowing that, you know, they're going to be able to...
That was my next question.
Do what they, they say they're going to be able to do, um, both, um, while here at the county and then also pass life, so...
And I, I, with, with firms like this, pricing and time is really affected by their current workload and projected workload, and it can, it can be all over the board.
Yeah.
The only concern I have because of the price differential is, is, you know, a lot of times you'll get this and all of a sudden you'll start to see change orders pop up. You know, that, oh, gosh, we didn't think about this, so it'll cost another 50 or 70,000 dollars, and, oh, gosh, this came up. There's another, and before you know it, you're up to the 400,000.
But I think the other firms are going to do the same thing.
Well, I'm not saying they won't. I'm not saying they won't, but I, I...
They, they were all given the same scope and same criteria to bid on.
I know, but I was involved in something one time, and that's exactly what happened.
It, it can happen, if the scope...
The same scope, but all of a sudden, when you got into it, and of course, by then you're into it, and you either got to get rid of them and start all over or pay the money.
That's right.
So I just, like I said, I just, that's my only thing, because of that past history is...
Sure.
I guess the positive side is if it's accepted, we're starting at a lower point.
That's right.
Yes, that is true, by substantial amount.
Still the cheapest one out there.
Yeah, yeah.
So staff's recommending alternative one?
I'd say if our county engineer is comfortable... For half of the taxpayers, I don't see how we would do anything else.
I'm not, I'm not saying let's don't do the others.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We just paid for half of those lights.
I think so, yeah.
I'm with you.
Jonathan, you, you put your name on this one, so...
I know, that's okay. I'm more than happy to.
Some great points that we're not having to do, uh, the GDOT, everything that you have to do with the GDOT standard, not that the standards won't be there that we need, but if you can avoid that and save that much money.
Replication and bureaucracy involved, it can be circumvented, that's great.
I know there's reason behind that as well, but if we can avoid that as a county.
Yeah, I'm, I'm personally excited about this because this, this lines up to my vision on how long some of these projects should take.
Yes.
And, you know, I think, you know, not that some of the other projects that we've done, they didn't deserve a little bit more time, but, um, you know, for a road realignment and roundabout, I don't think it needs to take 12, 15 months to do that, I think we can turn that around quick, so I'm excited to see that, one firm seems to think the same thing that I think.
I agree.
Totally agree with that.
Sounds good.
Can we move them to Hodgsville Road? Get that moved up.
Uh, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries, thank you, Jonathan. Item number 12, consideration to approve an on-call master services agreement with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated for geotechnical engineering services.
Yes, sir, Effingham County regularly requires geotechnical engineering services for road and infrastructure projects. Um, to streamline this process and to avoid delays, the county has negotiated a master service agreement with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated. This will allow the county to issue individual task orders for services like soil testing and payment evaluations without needing separate contracts each time. So staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries, with that, I'm going to suspend until our 6 o'clock agenda meeting, it'll be six minutes.
Thank you.
Back to order. Time is now 6:01. We're going to hear our planning board. As noted, items one and two have been removed from the agenda and postponed to June the third.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself. I got a baking relationship with the applicant.
Very good. Item number three is a public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Susan Nicole Ron to rezone plus or minus 6.13 acres located at 240 Bethany Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 442, parcel number 15, in the fourth district.
Yes, sir. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the plus or minus 6.13 acres to AR2. Conforming AR1 zoning shall have five acres or more, and since the applicant would like to subdivide the parcel into smaller lots, the zoning will need to change to AR2. There are currently other AR2 parcels to the south of this parcel along Low Ground Road. There is your zoning map, so you can, you can see, um, and it looks like I haven't zoomed out far enough there for you. I apologize for that. Um, the applicant wants to subdivide the land to deed the 2.17 acres to their daughter. Bethany Road is a county maintained road, and the future land use map projects the parcel as agricultural residential. So staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete with the following condition, that Development Services shall review and sign the plat, and then the plat shall be recorded, so the zoning can take effect.
Very good. Thank you, Chelsea. Nicole, Jason, you have anything you want to add? All right, with that, is there anyone here opposed? Being there are none, any questions from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we agreed to the, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else. I moved that we, uh, that we rezoned the property as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number four, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Susan Nicole Ron to rezone plus or minus 6.13 acres located at 240 Bethany Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 442, parcel number 15, in the fourth district. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Commissioner Deluge to come up? Item number five, public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Julie Jackson to rezone plus or minus 5.138 out of 41.11 acres located at 1350 Silver Hill Church Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 338, parcel number 13, in the third district.
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the 5.38 acres to AR2. And since the applicant is subdividing that 5.38 acres into three lots, the zoning does need to change to AR2. Silver Hill Church Road is a county maintained road, and the future land use map does project this parcel to be agricultural. I will say that this plat was signed by Development Services, um, early before, and the rezoning wasn't caught, so we are rezoning kind of on the back end, which is why the, why, um, you may have seen in your packets that the plat was already signed, so we are correcting that now. Staff has reviewed the application. The application is complete, and although it does have that, the plat does need to be signed. As you can see, it has been signed and recorded.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this? Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here opposed? Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number six, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Julie Jackson to rezone plus or minus 5.138, sorry, 5.38 out of 41.11 acres located at 1350 Silver Hill Church Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 338, parcel number 13, in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number seven, public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Edward Javan to rezone plus or minus 2.50 acres located at 247 Pine Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 302, parcel number 47, in the fifth district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the 2.50 acres to AR2. This is a non-conforming AR1 lot, and since the applicant would like to subdivide that 2.50 acres, the zoning will need to change to AR2. There are currently other AR2 parcels across Pine Street, as you can see there. Pine Street is a county maintained road, and the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete with the following condition, that Development Services shall review and sign the plat, and then the plat shall be recorded, so the zoning can take effect.
Thank you, Chelsea. Is the applicant here to speak on his behalf?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
We had the new plats made up by the surveyors, got them this week. We also had to get a water, public water service put in. It's in, it's done. We have a water account with Water Utility Management, so it's all ready to go.
Very good. Any questions from the board to the applicant?
Maybe I missed this in looking through the documents. What exactly are you going to do with the property?
Oh, we're selling the current house and the part we subdivide out to my brother-in-law's, and we're going to put our house into another property on the new corner side.
Thanks, sir. Anyone here opposed? Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number eight, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Edward Javan to rezone plus or minus 2.50 acres located at 247 Pine Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 302, parcel number 47, in the first district. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number nine, public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Dwayne Reagan to rezone plus or minus 1.46 acres located at 4363 Clio Killdeer Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 309, parcel number six, in the third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the 1.468 acres to AR2. The applicant is adding the .0467 acres to the 1.001 acre parcel, so that entire parcel then needs to come into zoning conformity, which would be AR2. This parcel is currently a non-conforming AR1 parcel, and there are multiple AR2 zone parcels nearby. There is your, and non-conforming.
So there is going to be a recombination or a?
It is, yes, sir. It's a, it's a recombination parcel. And because the lines are moving, we do have to bring it into conformity. Clio Killdeer Road is a county maintained road, and the future land use map projects this parcel as agricultural. Staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete with the following condition, that we shall sign, Development Services shall review and sign the plat, then the plat shall be recorded, so the zoning can take effect.
Thank you. Is there anything the applicant wishes to add if they're present?
Here, it's just to add a little bit of land to my parents' class that was not originally put on there, so that the farther backyard can actually be restored.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone here opposed? Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 10, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Dwayne Reagan to rezone plus or minus 1.46 acres located at 4363 Clio Killdeer Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 309, parcel number six, in the third district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 11, it's a public hearing. Planning board recommends approving an application by Warren Kennedy to rezone plus or minus 3.66 acres located on Elm Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 302, parcel number 136, in the first district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that 3.66 acres to AR2. Since the lot is currently a non-conforming AR1 lot, meaning less than five acres, the applicant would like to subdivide this lot, so the total acreage does need to come into zoning conformity, which will be AR2. There are multiple AR2 zone parcels on Elm Street and across Elm Street. Elm Street and Dogwood Way are county maintained roads, and the future land use map projects this parcel as agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete with the following condition, that Development Services shall review and sign the plat, and that the plat shall be recorded, so that the zoning can take effect.
Thank you, Chelsea.
There's your zoning map.
Is anyone here to speak on this behalf? Nothing to add? Perfect. Is anyone here opposed? Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 12, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Warren Kennedy to rezone plus or minus 3.66 acres located on Elm Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2, map number 302, parcel number 136, in the first district.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 13, it's a public hearing. Consideration to approve an application by Ray Webb for conditional use for a rural business in AR1 located at 1410 Little McCall Road, map number 346, parcel number 15, in the third district.
Good evening. Liz Sapp, land use planning analyst. Ray Webb requests approval for a conditional use to establish a company equipment yard located at 1410 Little McCall Road. The request for approval, the request for approval for conditional use is a requirement of section 3.1, or 3.15B, rural business. This property is zoned AR1 and partially located within a wetland. This property is approximately 19.703 acres and surrounded, and is surrounded by additional AR1 properties. The applicant is requesting approval for a conditional use to allow a rural business and establish a company equipment yard. The applicant is aware that approval must be granted prior to any disturbance of the wetlands. Staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete.
Is Mr. Webb here tonight?
He's there.
Come forward, please. Can you elaborate on what, uh, equipment is?
It's tractors, trucks, trailers, skid steers, hydro seaters.
Very good. And of this property, Chelsea, maybe you can answer this. I know you said some was wetland. How much of this is upland usable?
Um, let me pull that up for you, sir.
When you say trucks, you're talking big commercial trucks or smaller trucks?
No, 5,500 series and smaller, flat beds.
I could do this next?
Yes, sir.
So what are you, pretty much moving your yard that you had in the middle of Springfield?
Moving it out there around our room.
I got you.
Here is your wetlands layer. So that bright green layer that you see?
Mm-hmm.
That is the National Wetlands inventory is showing that as wetlands. Of course, he can have a wetland specialist come out to delineate that, because there are times that that is more extensive than what's actually out there. So we would recommend if you do plan on developing further back with your, with your business, to have that done.
Where were you proposing to locate your equipment at?
That front half that you see open with the barn. Yeah, it's right in there.
Okay, so front half closest to Little McCall or?
Yes, closest to Little McCall.
Okay. Very good.
As long as he stays 50 feet away from that, I think he could, could he just kind of do what he wants?
Yes, sir. So our ordinance does require that you have to have a 50-foot buffer from the wetlands that are shown on the National Wetlands Inventory.
Very good.
I did a couple hundred yards from that, probably.
And how does that, um, how does, how does that affect as far as the properties adjacent on either side? Is there any kind of buffer requirements for that or?
So, not that the ordinance right now, um, you know, he has to be within the setbacks. If he's, if he's building any type of accessory structure, he will have to follow accessory structure setbacks.
So he could put a truck as far as the property line goes presently?
So he can, he can, yes, he can park. We would definitely have to look at our parking ordinance to, to understand exactly how far he'd have to be from that.
Just throwing worst case out there.
No, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good. Any discussion from the board?
We have to ask if anybody's against it, don't we?
While, while we have him present, I'm going to see if you have any questions for him.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you would.
I don't have any.
No one? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this conditional use? Please come forward. Being there are none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any comments from the staff? Sorry, from board?
I'm familiar with this area. There's, uh, farmland in that area, so I don't think this will be a problem. He used to store his equipment right in the middle of Springfield. It wasn't an issue. It's not tractor-trailers. It's larger trucks, gooseneck, hauling tractors. I don't think it's anything out of characteristic in the area. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 14, second reading, consideration to approve second reading of an application by Ray Webb for a conditional use for a rural business in AR1 located at 1410 Little McCall Road, map number 346, parcel number 15, in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 15, consideration to approve an application by Richard Truluck for a variance from section 3 dot 3 dot 1 to increase in accessory structure building height in the planned development district located at 190 Palmetto Drive, map number 465B, parcel number 80, in the fifth district.
Good evening. Liz Sapp, land use planning analyst. Richard Truluck requests approval for a variance to allow for an increase in accessory structure building heights located at 190 Palmetto Drive Zone PD. The request for approval of a variance is a requirement of Article 3, Section 3.3.1, accessory structures in residential districts. The applicant is requesting a variance for an increase in accessory structure building heights. The applicant's property is located within the Silverwood subdivision. The property is currently located on a 1.37 acre lot, Zone PD. There are no wetlands or floodplain on this property. Currently, the county ordinance enforces section 3.3.1, which allows an accessory structure heights to be either one and one-half stories tall or 15 feet above finish grade. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow an accessory structure that is at or around 30 feet above finish grade on their property. Per the building plans provided to the county, the accessory structure will be used as a garage and poolhouse. Staff has reviewed the application, and it is complete.
Thank you. Thank you. If, uh, Mr. Truluck is here or representative, if there's anything you want to add, please come forward. Very good. I, I would imagine your HOA is dictating a lot of this as well?
The HOA has approved and signed off on the plans. Yeah, there are no issues.
Very good.
Matter of fact, all my neighbors, their garages are over the fifteen feet high, so...
Got you. Very good. Thanks, sir. Anything from board?
I, I don't. If you can, if you can get the HOA happy, who are we?
Yeah. And did we just, did we just address this at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's now twenty-five feet. Didn't quite get, get it there. But we did make changes.
Yeah, we did make changes. You just missed it by this much, so...
Well, we need to look at it again.
And go bigger.
Very good.
No, and, and, and this is a perfect example of this setting of thirty feet is not, it's not all, it's in fitting with the neighborhood, with Silverwood.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it turns out to be, I like you.
Yeah, but there are times, there are places that twenty-five may be...
Is there anyone here opposed to this? If please, if so, please come forward. Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number sixteen, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Richard Truluck for a variance from section three dot three dot one to increase an accessory structure building height in the planned development district located at one nine zero Palmetto Drive. Map number four six five B, parcel number eighty in the fifth district.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number nineteen, consideration to approve an application for a site plan for Wes Bancroft as agent for Kim Barnes for the Towers LLC located at four five zero C E L Old Augusta Road South, zoned AR one. Map number four six two, parcel number seventy-five in the fifth district.
Good evening, Liz Sapp, Land Use Planning Analyst. The request for approval of a site plan is a requirement of Article Five Telecommunication Regulations, Section fourteen point one three four B one Development Standards. At the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting, this nine acre lot zoned AR one was approved for conditional use to allow for the placement of a telecommunication tower shown on map parcel four six two dash seven five. The conditional use was approved if the lease was shown on the plat, and it was reviewed by Development Services, and it met the requirements of Article Five Telecommunication Regulations. The proposed monopole tower is a hundred and ninety-five feet tall structure with an additional four foot tall lightning rod at the top, totaling an overall height of a hundred and ninety-nine feet. Per the original plant, site plan submitted, the distance from lot lines shown had a hundred and twenty feet and a hundred and twenty-one feet setbacks from the center of the monopole tower. The county received a fall zone letter by a design professional stating that the tower was designed to buckle at the ninety-one foot elevation of the tower, leaving the upper hundred and eight feet top portion of the tower to include the lightning rod to swing down and rest on the ground. Due to the design of the monopole tower and the location of the yield buckle zone, the engineer, the engineer's letter states that the approximate fall radius is forty-nine feet. Per the county ordinance, section fourteen dash one three four B one, communication tower setbacks must be located at a minimum horizontal distance of one point two times the length of the complete tower, including the highest antenna, measured from the bottom of the tower to the very top of the highest antenna to an existing structure or property line, or in the case of a breakaway monopole tower, the setback distance shall be one point two times the length of the breakaway portion of the monopole tower. Per the county ordinance, the county has determined that the current fall zone of the monopole tower is a hundred and twenty-nine point six feet. The applicant has provided an updated site plan showing a hundred and thirty foot setback from lot lines and meets the requirements of the ordinance. Staff has reviewed the application, and it is complete.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good. This is on three, forty-eight, one, four, six, ten. Got it, perfect. Any, uh, discussion from the board?
Just curious, I've been learning more and more about wetlands delineation and when it applies, when it doesn't, and in a commercial application like this, would you require a core delineation since it's not residential?
Um, and actually, I'll have Liz come back up, because she, um, she is the one who actually updated our ordinance when we, when we did that, so she...
I'm just, just for my learning purposes, no, no, no other but...
Yes, sir. Uh, anytime you disturb the ground at all, um, below the dirt, then you, you have to have one. So in a commercial, you have to get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Corps, the Corps approval, yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, and residential, you can, you can get a wetland specialist to come out and delineate the wetlands on your property, um, so...
So now we require, so in this case, will we require delineation before we had allowed?
That's correct, yes, sir, if there's wetlands on the property.
So that these, has this been delineated so we know it's all dry?
I believe it has already, Chelsea.
Um, I would have to, I would have to double check that for you, um, but yes, I believe it has, um, when they initially came through for their conditional use, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just learning as I go.
It's going to significantly improve service, for sure, in that area, and that is a dead spot, for sure.
Very good. Any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I know we took seventeen and eighteen, we're told withdrawn by staff, but I see Mr. Morris back here. So I, I couldn't help but want, want, just figuring out what's going on.
As you told.
Okay.
Okay. Um, in, uh, this is that issue that we discussed, okay. So, um, essentially, um, there's, uh, some discrepancy with regards to how we used to, uh, review, uh, non-conforming lots and, uh, putting structures, um, such as swimming pools and, um, and sheds, um, uh, accessory units on them. And we are just being, uh, until and if we change the ordinance, we're going to be consistent on how we've done them in the past. And so it would not require, as long as he's in conformance with the setback requirements to do that.
I didn't know he was in that.
That, yeah, that's where he fits in on this. So he doesn't, he's not required to...
Well, I just saw him here, and I wanted to make sure he was, he knew what I was doing.
Unless he wants to rezone his property, um, but we're not going to require it.
Okay.
And when do we plan on hearing that, just for his?
What's that?
When, when do we plan on putting him back in?
Well, he's good to go. He doesn't need to do anything.
Okay, so he's straight.
Yeah, and so if, if we have to clarify any language regarding non-conforming lots, we'll do that, but until then, we will stay consistent with how we viewed them in the past.
So this is going to be done at staff level, done deal?
Correct. If we have to amend the ordinance, we'll bring it to you, but if we feel that, um, the wording's acceptable, then we'll leave it as is.
I, I didn't know that, either, that he was in the same, same vote of a few others.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right. Be moving back into new business. Item number three. Consideration to approve a final plat is presented by Coleman Company for Ramsey Landing Phase Three A located off Ebenezer Road consisting of fifty-two lots.
Yes, sir. So, um, we have the plat, as you see there on the screen, um, and so there was that discrepancy earlier about the lot number, um, thirty forty-eight and lot number thirty forty-three, and if they met the twelve thousand square foot minimum, um, they do, as lot four, uh, thirty forty-eight is fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six, and lot thirty forty-three is twelve thousand eighty-five point two, uh, square feet, so they do meet that. And then the notes that, um, are stated on your staff report, note five has been corrected, um, and note thirteen has also been corrected, so...
Okay, and those are the corner markers?
Yes, sir, and the, the markers have also been placed, uh, permanent monuments as well.
There was a, there was a chance that they weren't going to be set if it was done earlier, but that ship has sailed. Okay, okay.
That has, that has been corrected, so...
Gotcha. Okay.
Very good.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. That'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on the next item, I believe, is thirteen, I've got to recuse myself, um, I've got a banking relationship with the applicant, or for the awarded company Platinum Paving.
Thank you, sir. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve awarding the construction contract for the McCall Road North Reclamation Project to Platinum Paving and Concrete LLC.
Yes, sir. Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. Effingham County received four bids for the McCall Road North Reclamation Project, which included full depth reclamation as end asphalt overlay work on a one point nine mile stretch of roadway. After evaluating all submissions, Platinum Paving and Concrete LLC was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So the contract has submitted all required, the contractor has submitted all required documentation, and the project is expected to be completed within ninety days from the notice to proceed, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. And we're presently using Platinum on another project, or?
They're a sub, I believe, on another project. Jonathan?
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. They're, um, doing the T-Sploß resurfacing. Um, they're a sub for APAC. Um, APAC's the one doing the Hickory Knob, Griffin Lakes.
Mm-hmm.
Courthouse Road is specifically, I think that's the road that they, uh, used them as a sub.
Very good. Now, how are things going with that?
Um, well, we, um, the first, first portion of Courthouse Road, um, uh, was, you know, not ideal, um, but there are some things that they're doing to tweak it, to make it a little bit better, um, since we've had a conversation with them, um, about, you know, standards and what we want, that I think it's improved. So, yep, very, very good. I'm, I'm excited to see this, um, get awarded. And then one, one other thing I, I do want to make mention of in this contract, um, while we're here, is, um, this also includes a two-week shutdown of this portion of McCall Road, um, from Ralph Ron to, um, just shy of the city of Springfield Limits on McCall Road. And that'll be done during the summer of this year, and so there'll be a detour for that.
Will they be detouring?
Uh, they're going to detour them through, uh, Little McCall, um, and then Little McCall will take you to Courthouse Road that just got resurfaced. And then you have the other, uh, detour of Ron Station. So it's not ideal, but what was there, the reason why we're doing full depth reclamation is you have two inches of asphalt, or an inch and a half of asphalt over clay material, which I'm amazed that it's held up as long as it's held up over the years. So, anyway, because of the, the decision that the county made, I guess, back in the fifties to do that, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at now.
Where do you think the, um, the disconnect was on the, the quality initially that you were speaking to?
I don't think it was a disconnect. I think, um, I think during the, you know, back, back when the county was in that era, you know, the population wasn't, um, where it's at today, and, um, that's a very common, uh, practice.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about the, the subcontract portion of it of Courthouse.
Oh.
Dissatisfaction with that earlier.
Yeah, there was, you were a little apprehensive to elaborate, so if you could elaborate on that.
Yeah, no, no worries. Um, I think, uh, part of what it was is that they were wanting to stick, stay within the budget, um, that we, uh, had provided. They were a little shy of using a little bit more leveling quantities to, to make it a little bit, uh, different profile than what was there existing. Um, it is an improvement, in my opinion, compared to what was there. It's just, you know, I, I wish it was a little bit, uh, more, a little better, um, for that type of road that, um, Courthouse Road is as a collector road, so...
Right. Is that something we need to look at on our end, or?
Um, yeah, I think moving forward, what we've done is, um, part of the problem is, is, uh, using the, the type of mix, um, we were using a nine point five millimeter asphalt, which you can use a dump truck to do, um, the laying of asphalt. So when you do that, the laying of pavement, um, you can have a stop-go type method versus if you use a shuttle buggy, um, using twelve point five millimeter, um, asphalt, it'll allow them to continue to, you know, move and lay asphalt, and it'll be more seamless, you know, construction process, um, due to that. So, anyway, we, we've done that, um, change in our contracts moving forward for anything that's we deem as a collector road or is a collector road, um, or we're intending to be a collector road, um, that is going to be this higher, you know, standard of construction versus, um, not using the shuttle buggy, so...
Thank you.
And that's what will be used on this?
Uh, this, yes. Yes, ma'am. Yep. And this, this contract also includes, uh, the widening of McCall Road as well to get to that freight, uh, route network standard that we're going for, twelve-foot lanes and two-foot paved shoulders.
Perfect. Sounds like we're all on the same page.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve a professional service contract with Pond and Company for Meldrum Community Park, Clyo Community Center, Pinora Park, and Electrical Improvements at Effingham County Recreation Complex.
Yes, sir. The county is continuing efforts to improve local parks and rec, um, spaces. This contract with Pond and Company includes final construction documents, bidding assistance, and limited construction support for improvements at Meldrum Park, Clyo Community Center, Pinora Park, along with electrical upgrades at the recreation complex. Since Pond, um, completed the earlier design phase, they are best positioned to finalize the work and keep the projects moving forward, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Were we already doing some work on Meldrum? Was that, were we clearing out some areas?
Just for the final.
Yeah, they're out there right now doing the, um, during the playground.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's, the playgrounds are going to be, uh, and lighting, um, and field lighting are going to be separate contracts.
I was talking about what all they've done, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Any questions from the board? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number fifteen, consideration to approve award of contract ITB, number twenty-five dash ITB dash zero eight eight to McLendon Enterprises Incorporated for the T-Sploß Maintenance Resurfacing, twenty twenty-five dash D three, D four, and D five project.
The county, um, received five bids for resurfacing about eighteen point six miles of roadway across twenty-six locations in Districts three, four, and five. After evaluating the proposals, McLendon Enterprises Incorporated was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The project includes patching, leveling, and resurfacing in line with GDOT standards and must be completed within two hundred and seventy days from the notice to proceed, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm reviewing the numbers here. Uh, Jonathan, do you have any concerns with this? Is it good? Perfect. Thank you. Any, uh, questions from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number sixteen, consideration to approve a contract to ECS South LLC for construction materials, testing, and special inspection services for the two point zero million gallons per day Effingham County wastewater treatment plant expansion.
As part of the Effingham County wastewater treatment plant expansion project, the county solicited proposals for construction materials, testing, and special inspection services. Four proposals were received, and ECS Southeast LLC was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible proposer. Their scope covers all required inspections, including earthwork, concrete, foundations, masonry, steel, and paving, so the county's consultant, Hussy Gay Bell, supports awarding the contract to ECS based on experience and efficiency, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve alternative one. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve, reports from commissioners and administrative staff. Madam Clerk, I'll start with you if you have anything.
I do not, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to leave you out this time while I forget you something. Tim, anything?
Yeah, I just got two quick things, and need for executive session. The two events coming up, we do have a town hall for District Four, Commissioner Hemley, and that will be at Ebenezer Middle on Monday evening. I believe that's starting at six, if I'm correct? Six-thirty. And then, following that, the following day, on Tuesday, the thirteenth, at four P.M., we are planning on having the ribbon cutting for the new playground at Sand Hill Recreation Complex. So, it looks fantastic, they've been using it, but we wanted to put a time aside to celebrate it.
You can't use it till the ribbon's cut, man. Very good. Yeah, if you can put that on the calendar, that'd be great.
You have an email in your inbox on that, sir.
I knew you was going to say that. Thank you. Anything else from other staff?
No.
Okay, good. Commissioner Floyd, start with you.
I don't have anything, but I am continuing to get calls, positive calls about all the paving. Everybody's particular with what we're doing, so.
That's all, everyone gets positive stuff, man.
I like positive calls.
Wow. Very good. Commissioner?
I do have a concern I'd like to bring up to the board and to everyone, really. And it's concerning when we rezone a property with the intent of doing something, and it's kind of a bait-and-switch scenario where somebody else comes along and does something entirely different because it fits in the zoning, you know? What kind of mechanisms could we use? Or, I know in the past, we have put stipulations on if it ever changes hands, like a church situation. And what really brought to my attention here lately is we rezoned approximately half an acre right in front of South Effingham Elementary, or South Effingham High School, which is right across from a church. And I can't remember who it was that came forth, but they had an idea of a sandwich shop, and I'm like, that's a great idea, to have a sandwich shop in front of the high school. And now, it's up for sale for whatever purposes it could be, and it could be a funeral home or a CBD store or whatever, because we don't have anything in there to keep that from happening. So, you know, I think we need something that we could use as a tool, just to make sure we're zoning for the right purposes and for the right uses, that it's not a bait-and-switch scenario. And that might not happen, I'm not saying that's what happened. They could have rezoned it, and a realtor came along, or an investor said, hey, now that it's a B, I'll go ahead and buy it, take it off your hands, and made them an offer, and they had intentions of doing that, but...
I think the issue, though, is once we rezon it, anything that's within that zoning is permitted. I mean, you can't hold somebody and say, you told me a sandwich shop, but I want to put a florist in. You know, that's the thing.
We wouldn't want a CBD shop or a smoke shop in front of schools.
Is it legal in that zoning, though? Is it? That's the thing.
Yeah, it is. Do you want that in a school? And, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure we take care of the kids and schools and everything else, and then, we don't have a tool to do that in those situations. You know, some, it wouldn't even matter. I mean, if somebody, a florist, if it was a florist, nobody would say a word, but if it's something arbitrary like that, I was looking at the uses that we currently have, nobody's going to like that, and then, we don't have a leg to stand on.
Well, I mean, the one possibility, in the workshop, we did go over the table of permitted uses, and that's one thing that you can look at, is those particular uses that you may have some concern about at certain locations, they can be set up as conditional. And so, they're not set by right. Of course, you have to do that on a use-by-use basis, but it does provide some sort of protection against certain uses in certain locations.
I know in Bloomingdale, when I was on the planning board there, they had a, you could rezon, but for like selling alcohol or maybe, I don't know if it was B, they had to be like a thousand-foot from a church.
Yeah, it could be.
Put so many feet from a school or something like that, there's a control mechanism, but...
I mean, if we did something like that, and it's next to somebody's home, and then it's something that creates a lot more traffic than the original intent was, then it's just not fair to the people around them, you know? Hey, well, you're going to do a sandwich shop, and I expected this, but now you're doing this, and there's forty cars every hour coming in, you know? There's got to be something we could do to help protect people, I would think. And we've done it, we've put stipulations on stuff to where...
You can put use stipulations.
Yeah, and we've done that in the past, but I didn't know if that would be something we want to do over and over again, or...
Well, that's the thing, they're very difficult to track.
Right, exactly. So, I don't want to... Of course, if it was a big situation like this, it'd probably stick out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just identify areas that we want to protect, you know, similar to schools, churches, you know, anything that we come up with, and go ahead and kind of do an overlay of that area in our table of permitted uses. That would not be, that would be conditional in those areas.
And stuff like that, I could see us adding things to the ordinance of, you know, you can't bear so much room of a school or a church or something like that. There's got to be some ways to do it, but I was just trying to think how we could better protect.
That would be something that would be concrete. You wouldn't have any, you know, if it's a thousand feet, it's a thousand feet, you know?
Right, that would kind of rule it out of that area.
That would rule it out.
Maybe one mechanism we could use. I just thought I'd bring it up, I saw it happen recently, and we've seen it happen to us several occasions where, hey, that was supposed to be this, and I'm not going to mention what it is, and it turns out to be something entirely different, and then there...
And that was something, Roger, you brought it up, and it's similar too, but I was going to speak with our attorney about, you know, when we rezone a property and have any expectations of development, of when the development's going to happen, is it allowable to allow, what I'll say, a fair amount of time for that process to kick off? Because we've come across properties that have been approved from years and years ago that somebody else is coming up against, and it's kind of lost and shuffled and forgot. I have asked our Development Services Group to create a layer on our GIS map of approved properties that show some kind of hatching, just some kind of, you know, distinction that this has been rezoned and/or approved, or a plat's been approved. That way, we have a visual...
Overlay district is what you're describing.
Yeah, just a visual representation of what's, you know, adjacent to it.
And I know timetables like that change, but, you know, if you've got something that hasn't been developed in four or five years, how do you plan for your traffic? How do you know?
That's...
You know, that makes it so hard to do what we're elected to do up here.
That was the intent of them, I thought, was how do you properly plan if you don't know? A rough idea when things are coming, and I guess it's a determination of, A, is it possible, and then, B, what is a reasonable by time?
It's reasonable.
What was the zoning on that? Do you remember B-one, two, three?
Which one? The one by the school?
The one you're describing.
Oh, that one's, I'm pretty sure it's a B-one. It's a pretty lightweight thing, but I looked on our table of uses and...
I think it's reasonable to look at some conditional uses for certain uses in B-one, because that's neighborhood commercial.
And we could change that, but it could, you know...
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Who knows what they would get changed to, and the impact on that particular area or a neighbor or anything? I just want, I'd like people to tell the truth when they're up here rezoning.
They've been there, too.
It could have been. I can say, I don't want to throw my best, I just assume that, but we have seen it.
Yeah, things change.
We can get them to...
Intentionally.
We can pinky swear, moving forward, this is going to happen, so. And that stands the test of contracts in the state of Georgia.
Just spitballing some ideas.
Excuse me just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Could you all invest some money and get these microphones, get your tags to your collar or something, where we could hear what you boys are saying up there?
I would love that.
All we can hear, we can hear Jamie pretty good every time he talks, but most of you, you're mumbling.
Jamie's got that radio voice. He could...
My Florida, he's ready back like a king down there.
Always good to see you, Mr. Blakey.
Jamie could do T.O.C. tomorrow.
If you're a fellow right hand, he says you're mumbling.
Yes, sir. That is something I have spoken about, and where we are on it, I'm not sure. But, yeah, that would be great. Because I don't speak very loud, I feel like it strains my voice to talk loud, so I get more huns at home than I do answers. Very good. Commissioner Delutch? Commissioner Hemley?
Just what he's already mentioned, Town Hall, May twelfth, at Ebenezer Middle, so, six-thirty. What he's saying is, Town Hall, May twelfth, at Ebenezer Middle School, six-thirty. So, we have some specific topics, Staffordshire, DRT, low-ground road, and the big water treatment and so forth. So, that's the major topics, but we will be covering, of course, anything that has to do with Effingham County that's going on, so you'll sort of get an overall picture, too, of things, and there will, you can send in some questions, if you'd like specific questions answered, but we'll be around to talk to you, so. Hope everybody can come out. It is fourth district, but I don't think my other compadres up here will care if some of their people come as well, so. Thank you.
Got them all.
Good point about the talking.
Yes, sir.
No. Well, I moved the microphone and I moved up to it, so...
We're not doing it on purpose, I promise.
Yes, sorry.
But, good point.
That, and I get in trouble for clicking my pen online, so I've been trying to be knowledgeable about that. People say it drives me insane, listening to you on YouTube, it's a nervous habit. Commissioner Kiefer?
Just one thing, where we stand, anything on Hickory Knob, finishing that up? Do we know anything?
Josh Agar, EOM. All the signs are in, we're still waiting on post-delivery and also the speed home.
Perfect. But there, everything's moving as soon as you...
It's moving, yep, it's moving, and as soon as we get all the stuff, we'll get rolling on it, so.
Okay.
By the way, I saw one of the no-truck signs on Colic Hemley. Thank you. Those are the bomb, those are perfect.
Yep, we've got the first handful up. If you see where you want some more up, let us know, and we'll get some.
Ocean Road, closest twenty-one you can possibly get.
There should be one there already.
There is, oh, good.
Yeah.
Ron Station Road, if you've got some there, if that's not up, I'd like to see those go up there.
Okay.
But thank you all for doing that.
It was like one of those huge dump trucks today running it. Those ones, it's the tractor-trailer looking ones?
We have a meeting, do we have a meeting set up with the sheriff yet?
No, because the music is out next week when you're there, and I, we're working on it.
Okay, we're working on a date with his traffic crew to discuss the truck ordinance.
I'd like to revisit that idea about code enforcement for us, having an actual deputy.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone I missed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Thank you all.